Kerrigan here. Caldwell.
Here.
Vidlac here. Solomon.
Here.
Joy B. and the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Three, for public information, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is available for review. It's above Tom and Lane. Four, notice of changes in the agenda by the city clerk. Additions may not be made to this agenda less than 24 hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item five of this agenda. Do you have any changes?
No changes, Your Honor.
Five, citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law, no matter may be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. Do you have any emergency actions? Okay. Six, closed session. Council reserves the right to enter into closed session if deemed necessary if the item is on the agenda as per section eighty-four dash fourteen-ten of the Nebraska revised statutes. Seven, Scottsbluff Youth Council. We have any youth council tonight? No? Eight, consent calendar. Items in the consent calendar are proposed for adoption by one action for all items unless any member of the council requested an item be considered separately. Do you have any questions or comments on the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Vidlac. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes. Nine, financial report. Council to receive the February two thousand twenty-four financial report.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Link is our finance director. I'll start on that first page there. Just kind of touch on a few things there. Again, net positive for the first five months of the year in change in cash, about four million dollars. Large part of that is the money we're sitting on in streets. We haven't started that project yet. The other large part of that's going to be those alarm payments for the insurance proceeds from that June hailstorm. So, haven't done any of those projects either yet. On the monthly income, there was about four hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the positive. Not really anything to note, I guess, to talk about. I did go through and sifted through just the general budgets and stuff. Overall, general funds up about two hundred and forty thousand dollars this year. You know, streets, like I said, is about, it's two, two point four million dollars in the positive. But again, we're waiting on that twenty-three project to take hold. So that'll kind of dwindle down as it goes. Cemetery perpetual care fund is one of our more negative accounts. And a large part of that's just when property tax comes in. Your big property tax could be May and August. So, that's when they're due. So that's when you're going to catch the bulk of that. And special projects is positive one point one million. And that's just that alarm money. We deposited all those alarm checks this year. And yeah, other than that, then the water department's the only proprietary function that's sitting in the negative, and it's a negative thirty-six thousand dollars. And I think two hundred and twelve of that was emergency, main replacements, contingencies. And I think, like I told Matt earlier today too, you don't really expect the water department to make money when nobody's watering their grass or something like that. You know, most of the utility bills are pretty, pretty small right now. So, that's, that's about it.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on the financial report? It looks like sales tax revenue's been up.
Yeah, sales tax has been really good too, which I'm kind of a glass half-full kind of guy on that because usually these stuff's more expensive too, so.
That's true. Okay.
Okay, looks good.
Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
I motion to approve.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Solomon, second by Caldwell. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Solomon.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Resolution and ordinances. Council to consider action on the third reading of the ordinance annexing real property platted as lots one, two, three, and four, block one, Triple Peaks subdivision. An ordinance of the city of Scottsbluff, Nebraska, annexing real property platted as lots one, two, three, and four, block one, Triple Peaks subdivision, in addition to the city of Scottsbluff, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, situated in the northeast quarter of section twenty-four, township twenty-two north, range fifty-five west of the sixth principal meridian, Scottsbluff County, Nebraska, amending section twenty-five dash one dash three point one of the municipal code and providing for publication in pamphlet form. Do we have a motion to approve the ordinance?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Caldwell, second by Vidlac. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Be counsel to consider action on the resolution ratifying the study of blight and substandard conditions of Triple Peaks subdivision and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Now that we've got somebody interested in developing the area, they have made a TIF application to help with some of the infrastructure that they're going to be putting in there. And you'll see from the reports and the attachments that in two thousand thirteen, we had a blighted and substandard study that was completed. And so, that's been ten years. So now that we have an application, we thought we'd have the council review it and ratify it to get the, the next few agenda items. Well, the next few meetings, you'll see some agenda items on the actual TIF application and financing.
So would the TIF funding still be able to occur without this then, or?
Well, no. If it was not blighted and substandard.
Okay.
That's part of the statutory requirement is we had to have an engineering study in the area. They go and they review it, they take pictures. The unique thing about this, even though it's ten years old, is it was farm ground at the time. So, it's still farm ground. So all of the elements that, you know, made it blighted and substandard, the lack of improvements, no streets, no buildings, no development that'll last, I think it's forty years. It's all still present.
Still relevant today.
Okay.
Okay. I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Solomon. Any questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Counsel to consider action on the amended pay resolution and authorize the mayor to sign the resolution.
Your Honor and counsel, as you know, Chris Burbak's going to retire May third. So we're making adjustment to her position. She does a lot for us. So we're going to divvy up some of those responsibilities to others at the city. I don't think we'll ever be able to hire somebody that could do everything that Chris does for us. So, we'll have somebody take on some of her utilities and responsibilities. She's also our backup deputy city clerk. So we'll try to bring somebody up to speed on that and get Kim a backup. So in doing that, we're going to take this position from a salaried position to hourly position. So, that's the proposal. The salaried position will still be in there if we would need to do something this year different. I know right now we're advertising for the position. I think we have two applications. So, we'll have to see how this goes.
Okay, what's it called?
What do we call them? Senior account clerk. Adds his number twenty-one. If you see that. Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Solomon. Any other questions or comments? Call the roll, please.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Eleven, petitions, communications, and public input. Counsel to discuss and consider action on three special designated liquor licenses for West Nebraska Arts Center, one oh six East Eighteenth Street, Scottsbluff, Nebraska, to serve beer and wine at a fundraiser on four thirteen from sixty eleven P M. And art exhibit receptions on seven eighteen and eight one from four to eight P M. Hello.
Hi, I'm Michelle Denton from West Nebraska Arts Center. So I'm trying to like get everything done for almost the rest of the year so I don't have to come back for a while. We had to postpone our wine tasting that we usually have in January. We're going to have that in April. So, that's the first one. And the other two are receptions. Steve and Terry Bonds have an art show in August. And then we have a president show in July, so.
Any issues?
We don't have any issues.
Okay.
No issues.
No, none. We've never been called to the arts center.
I hate it when you say that.
Me too. Right now.
Okay. Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Vidlac. Any questions, comments? Call the roll, please.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, come. You can come to the reception.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Be counsel to discuss and consider action on a special designated liquor license for Schluter Eats Inc. to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits at a beer and wine fest hosted by the Next Young Professionals on June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four, from four to eight P M. at the Eighteenth Street Plaza. Hello.
Jessica Schluter from Emporium Express.
Hello. Want to tell us about your event?
Oh, yes, so it's a beer and wine fest for the Next Young Professionals. We're going to be both selling and serving alcohol from Emporium Express.
Okay.
This, this the first year you've done this, or?
Yeah.
And you guys do wristbands and all that?
We found that sometimes it's easy for folks to take them off. So we weren't going to do wristbands, but we were just going to make sure we required identification every time somebody purchased, whether it's their first or second, doesn't matter, ID every time.
Okay.
And you guys hire off-duty officers to man the event?
We were planning on putting staff at the gates so that we would have people stationed kind of at exits to make sure no alcohol left at premises.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I help Jessica? Flyover's involved with Next Young Professionals with planning the event. You have to be twenty-one to purchase a ticket to attend the event. There will be people at the gates, and the Next Young Professionals will be manning all of the gates. And I don't know if they're planning on wristbanding, but there'll be some sort of entrance you have to go through to be carded to get in to the.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Solomon, second by Vidlac. Any questions from anyone?
Thanks.
Call the roll, please. McCarrigan. Yes. Solomon.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
See, counsel to discuss and consider action on six special designated liquor licenses for Schluter Eats Inc. to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits on five five, six two, seven seven, eight four, nine one, and ten six at the Sundays in the park with Fido event at the Eighteenth Street Plaza from one to six P M.
Yeah, it's going to be fun. So it's like an event for us, obviously, for the community, but also for the Humane Society. So there's going to be adoptable dogs in the area, encouraging families to come out, pet some dogs, you know, adults can have a beverage if they'd like, but it should be, it should be fun.
Cool.
That's pretty cool. All right. And you'll have people at the gates and everything.
At the gates as well, yeah, similar to the last, yeah.
All right.
And dogs.
Okay.
You have any?
You have issues, Kevin, questions?
No, I don't. And we could probably staff this with on-duty personnel since it is a Sunday and it's an afternoon. So, because we would like to see a law enforcement presence at these events, so.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Vidlac. Any questions? Okay, call the roll, please.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Do counsel to discuss and consider action on five special designated liquor licenses for BDS three C LLC, DBA, Flyover Brewing Company to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits on five five, six two, seven seven, eight four, and nine one at the Sundays in the park with Fido event at the Eighteenth Street Plaza from one to six P M.
Same as Emporium Express. We are asked to participate. We are not bringing the trailer to this event. So this will be canned sales. We'll bring the wagon, the tent, everything from across the street. We do wristband at this event. Anybody that's attending, we do have servers that are Safe Serve certified, or I guess it's called tips now.
Tips.
So we will wristband and card everybody that's there.
Okay. All right. Nothing?
No, it's same event.
Okay.
We'll try to staff it with the on-duty personnel.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
All right. Be counsel to discuss and consider action on a special designated liquor license for BDS three C LLC, DBA, Flyover Brewing Company to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits at the teacher appreciation celebration at the Eighteenth Street Plaza from three to eight P M. on May eleventh, two thousand twenty-four.
This is an event that Scottsbluff Public Schools had approached us about. They're having a celebration to celebrate their teachers at the end of the school year. Had asked us if we would participate and serve beer at the event at teacher's cost. Again, we're not bringing the trailer. This will be canned sales, bringing the wagon, the tarp, the tent, and cans from across the street. We will card. We'll have two staff on duty there with wristbands and carding everybody who's drinking.
Kevin?
I don't, we don't have any issues with this. I think this is actually their second year that they've done this. So, and it's Saturday, three to eight, so I don't foresee any issues.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Solomon. Any questions?
No, thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes. Counsel to discuss and consider action on ten special designated liquor licenses for BDS three C LLC, DBA, Flyover Brewing Company to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits at bands on Broadway, six six, six thirteen, six twenty, six twenty-seven, seven eleven, seven eighteen, seven twenty-five, eight one, eight eight, and eight fifteen from four to ten P M. at the Eighteenth Street Plaza.
Clearly, I'm ahead of myself. I'm getting organized for the summer. This one is going to be trailer, as it is in the past. I'm assuming that there's been a little bit of changes for bands on Broadway. I was told that we don't have to monitor all of the gates any longer, but we do have staff that will monitor a gate. And we're usually parked near a gate, so that's not a problem with our staff at all.
We will be there for this, for this event.
Okay.
They will hire off-duty police officers.
And we do, again, we card. This is a big event for us. We'll have four staff there that are all E-Tip certified. I will be present at all but two events. On the events that I'm not there, I designate a person to act as the lead in my absence, carding and wristband for everybody that's there.
Okay.
And this, this event's getting pretty big too. That's why we want to be there for this.
Okay.
Yeah, and I did request on this one this year, I don't know if you noticed on the end, I asked for an extra date because last year we, there was a rainout and there was an extra date, and we missed it because we, we couldn't get the N S D L fast enough. Whether or not they have one, I added that extra date just in case.
Okay.
What were you thinking?
Yeah, I'm ahead of the curve this time.
That's good. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Vidlac. You have any questions? Call the roll, please.
Solomon.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Gee, counsel to discuss and consider action on a community festival permit for BSD three C LLC, DBA, Flyover Brewing Company on July sixth, eleven A M. to eleven P M. To include noise permit and street closure of Nineteenth Street Broadway to alley, seven A M., seven six to twelve P M., seven seven for a birthday brew-off and street dance.
So this is the second year that we're asking for the street closure permit. So my nickname at the brewery is the dream maker. So when the boss's dream's something, I'm the one that makes it happen. So this is, we are sixth birthday this summer. Joe would like to continue having celebrations. We do have a home brewing brew-off that we will host that afternoon in the atrium inside. And then we'd like to have a street dance outside on Nineteenth Street immediately after that. So we'll get the cattle panels from Broadway back to the alley set up. We would need assistance with the street closure signs. And I've asked for it until noon on Sunday just because we have to have, we're going to have a stage out there. So we have to have somebody come in and move the stage. We can take down the street closure signs Saturday night, but we'll have to have somebody come in and actually physically move the stage Sunday morning because I'm assuming they're not going to want to come in with a, with a skid steer or something Saturday night at eleven when we break down to do that. So first thing Sunday, they'll be over there to break it down. And we'll get all the panels up against the building like we did last year too.
Okay. Kevin?
Is that fine?
Yeah, yeah, I think you guys actually did that for three days. It was the weekend last year. We really didn't have any issues, so.
Yeah, and we did all the cleanup afterwards. And then we did it for a second event also, and then we did cleanup that night. The second event, we didn't have a stage, but we did all the cleanup that night. So we have enough staff that we can, we'll get everybody to pitch in and take care of it.
See any problems. There's no business to the north of you, so it's really just you and that.
Correct. Yeah, unless somebody were to come in and open something, which I don't. There's some pretty big renovations that are needed in that building before anybody opens, so.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Solomon, second by Vidlac. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Counsel to discuss and consider action on a special designated liquor license for BDS three C LLC, DBA, Flyover Brewing Company to serve beer, wine, and distilled spirits at a birthday celebration and concert located at eighteen twenty-four Broadway and Nineteenth Street from three D eleven P M.
This would just allow the trailer to be outside during that street closure to alleviate the pressure on the bar insides. We'd put the trailer outside in the festival area and allow patrons to purchase beer outside. Anybody that comes into that designated area would have to have a ticket, and we would card them and wristband them appropriately if they're over twenty-one or not. So like over twenty-one is pink, under twenty-one's yellow or something, similar to that.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Caldwell, second by Vidlac. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Twelve, bids and awards. Counsel to discuss and consider action on awarding the bid for one new twenty-two foot finishing mower for the Parks Department to sales Midwest Inc. in the amount of thirty-nine thousand seven hundred.
Yes, Your Honor and counsel, this, this is the only bid that we received. And we had fifty thousand dollars budgeted for this project. So it came in well below what we had budgeted.
All right. Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Solomon, second by Vidlac. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Solomon.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes. Be counsel to discuss and consider action on awarding the bid for one new base model crew cab, four-wheel-drive, three-quarter pickup truck for the Parks Department to TransWest Ford LLC in the amount of fifty-three thousand seventy-five.
And this is a pickup for the Parks Department. We received one bid for the fifty-three thousand dollars, and we have sixty-one thousand dollars budgeted. So staff's recommending awarding the bid to TransWest.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Caldwell, second by Vidlac. Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Solomon.
Yes.
Vidlac.
Yes.
McCarrigan.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Thirteen, reports from staff, boards, and commission. A counsel to discuss and consider action on the economic development assistance agreement with Y O, Nebraska Alfalfa Mill LLC with YO Nebraska Alfalfa Mill LLC and authorize the Economic Development Program Administrator to sign the agreement.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So we have the applicants Ryan Walker and Levi Umble with YO Nebraska Alfalfa Mill LLC. Here tonight, they plan to open an alfalfa pellet mill in Mitchell, Nebraska. The applicants have applied for a loan of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the City of Scottsbluff's LB eight forty funds. The proceeds of the loan will be primarily used for the completion of the mill and the operation of the milling equipment. They already have two full-time employees who will be eligible for annual job credits with the potential of adding more employees in the years to come due to the demand and abundance of alfalfa crops in our area. The applicants went before the LB eight forty Application Review Committee in February, and after hearing their business plan and the need of this pellet mill with the impact it will provide for our community and well beyond Western Nebraska, they decided to give a positive recommendation to the city council. And Ryan and Levi are here this evening to answer questions that you guys might have on the project.
Okay.
I'm Levi Umble.
I'm Ryan Walker.
Okay.
You guys have any questions? You wanna give us, or you want us to give you a rundown of what we're doing? Okay, so the, the mill, Herter used to own it at one point in time on sunflower oil in Mitchell, Nebraska. And it was purchased sometime after Herter had it in two thousand thirteen and then ran until about twenty twenty. The mill was pretty dilapidated. They made a lot of other products there besides alfalfa pellets. They made other kinds of cattle feed, range cake, different stuff like that. But Ryan and I are both alfalfa growers and alfalfa producers, and we really see a need in our area to create a better market for alfalfa. So one thing is, we need to get the mill going again, which required a lot of new equipment. But then we also see a big demand for mostly getting our product out of this region. And by making it into pellets, we can actually ship it to a lot more places in the country and get a lot of different markets for it, so.
And there is more chances we can bag it too. So I mean, there's different avenues we can go with this. This is just the beginnings of turning hay into a small pellet, but it can grow from there however we see the markets go. And then, of course, you could hire more employees if it did work out that way.
Yeah, if we got into a bagging situation where we are putting in fifty-pound bags, then it would require more, definitely require more staff and more equipment to be able to do that, depending on the markets.
Is your clients like cattle feeders, I mean?
So the main client, clients for alfalfa pellets was bulk to begin with, is what we wanna do. We don't wanna have to do retail. One, it takes more staff and the location is not great. And so the people that are gonna buy bulk alfalfa pellets are gonna be like mostly sheep feeders, people that are going to possibly re-bag them or bag them into smaller quantities. And then also, there's a lot of people that re-grind them and use them in different feeds. There's mills all over the country that use alfalfa, but our area is pretty unique in the amount, the kind of alfalfa we can raise. It has higher protein, so it's really desirable. So there's mills in Texas, California, Idaho that use alfalfa pellets quite a bit. And those are just a couple of them in the area.
And horses too. Horse is a big one.
Horses are a big one. A lot of it is a convenience factor. So like fifty-pound bags for horses are, people can travel with them or, you know, it's easier to carry and cleaner than taking hay bale.
And it's a business that's been there since I was there when it started in eighty-four. But eighty-four on, it's been a business there. It's just the owner that has it now, we rented it from him or leased it from him for three years. But it's a business that's going on, so it's not something totally new and out of the, you know. We didn't make this up.
That's a viable business, it's just getting revived.
Just needed updated, and we were brave enough to do it, and had a lot of cleanup, but we did it, so. We already made some pellets.
Nobody in the immediate area doing that?
No, the closest person that actually is doing any pelletizing is, there's a mill down in Pineville, Nebraska that does alfalfa pellets. But then you get outside of that area, the closest one's Gothenburg, Nebraska, or Cozad. And they do a different product. They actually, we're gonna take bales and grind them into alfalfa pellets. The big mill in Gothenburg, they actually take wet hay, dry it, and then make alfalfa pellets. So there's different demand for both of those products as well.
And this is an opportunity for all the alfalfa growers in the area. It's not just your alfalfa.
No, it is alf, the kinda hay that you need at the mill is a lower quality hay. It just has to be, you want it to be a nice color, you know. So a lot of the alfalfa in our area has really high feed value, and it's really digestible, and a lot of that gets sold into the dairy markets. So it's not just our hay that we're gonna process through there, because even the alfalfa that we grow, there's a lot of that alfalfa that's not the kinda alfalfa that you wanna run through the mill. And it's actually, you can sell it for more money in a bale to different markets. So we'll be buying a lot of alfalfa from a lot of the different growers. And this year, I don't know if you guys are aware, there's a lot of carryover alfalfa. There's, I actually drove the back ropes from Torrington today, and it's just sitting around. It just happened to be a really bad year for demand for alfalfa. And so it's just one thing that we really need as hay growers, it's not the two of us, but all the hay growers, it's just more consistent markets. But it's gonna just benefit us on that end. It'll help everybody be able to get rid of alfalfa that way.
So you're starting with two employees. Do you see it growing then within this next year, once you get started?
Within the next year, possibly. Definitely after the first year, after we get the markets developed, we would like to at some point be able to bag it into fifty-pound bags and get into the retail locations. A lot of the bagged alfalfa you see in retail locations come from like Idaho or Texas. And we don't really see the need for them to have to ship those products into our area when we have an abundance of alfalfa here. So if we can sell them to the whole, to the retail market, we don't really want, like I said, don't wanna do retail ourselves and have a big store, but we would rather work with a retailer.
Okay. Do you have any other questions?
That's good information, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Call the roll please. McCarrigan?
Yes.
Colwell?
Yes.
Vidlock?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, B, council to discuss and consider action on a funding request from Colleen Johnson representing Old West Balloon Fest to help defray the cost of the event that will be held in August two thousand twenty-four.
Good evening again. Colleen Johnson is here this evening to request twenty thousand dollars from the community programming fund to help with costs associated with the Old West Balloon Fest. One of the community programming fund's purposes is to help fund community events that generate sales tax and lodging tax in our community. This application has been reviewed by myself, Kevin Spencer, and Finance Director Lane Kazire before it has came before you guys. And I have Colleen here tonight to give a short presentation, and then I can help answer some questions after she's finished.
Okay.
Only I think I sent you the wrong presentation. It's okay, it's all right. So we are celebrating our tenth anniversary. A lot of you know that Brenda Lisi and Becky Horn started this ten years ago, started the process of getting this going again. It's been super successful, a lot of fun in the community. So our mission is to create a joyful experience for patrons of all ages, family-friendly. It's a world-class event that brings balloonists from all over the United States. And you'll see a graphic that I came up with with our parking pass, so we also are attracting people from all over the place. And that's this one. So this, the parking passes sold last year online. We started capturing zip codes. It's impressive. I've got another gal working on. It was just too many. Out of, out of all the zip codes in Nebraska, there's three hundred and fifty. We sold to a hundred and eighty different zip codes in Nebraska. So she's working on a graphic that'll show us exactly where those parking passes were sold. Two hundred and fifty-three, which is impressive, in Wyoming. And these are not pilots buying these parking passes. I mean, we sold seven in Florida, for goodness sakes, and one in England. So that was interesting, trying to figure out how to ship her the parking pass. But I think these numbers are really impressive and shows that we are attracting people from around the United States to Western Nebraska. We are changing the night glow at WNCC to Thursday night, so that will take place on August eighth, and it is free. The parking pass is good if you wanna park close in. So if people wanna park next to the college, the parking pass will get them up there. Our hugest success last year was the youth ballooning camp. The kids learned about the science of hot air ballooning, their hands-on learning. We'll have that again this year. The kids all get a T-shirt, and, you know, it was so fun, because my husband and I taught the class. They would come up to us in Walmart and like, we knew about that. And some of the kids volunteered for the pilots. And the pilots were impressed at the knowledge that the kids had of how ballooning works and what they needed to do to help crew. Last year, we had over three hundred kids attend, and this year, we're shooting for four hundred. And that is all kids here in the valley. Mass ascensions at Mitchell Airfield. Hey, we're doing some alfalfa there. They're gone, yeah. So the ninth and the tenth in the morning will be the mass ascensions. And then we're doing a discovery tent this year, because not everybody can attend. The kids' ballooning camps will have all that information. And Discovery Learning Center and Gearing's Visitors Bureau is hosting that and sponsoring that for us. So, and you know, there's a lot of people that have questions about hot air balloons, how they work. And so that's what the tents will be there for, and then we'll also have food and merchandise vendors, local food and merchandise vendors. The night glow has been moved to Mitchell. We just felt that it was financially better for us. This picture didn't turn out the greatest. Sorry, it's kinda hard in motion. We had a, we had a drone show last year in Gearing, was super successful. I don't know if any of you were able to attend, but it was really fun. So we've expanded that to two hundred drones this year. And they depict different Western Nebraska skies, things of Western Nebraska in the sky. The biggest hit was the big N for the Huskers. We're trying to figure out how we can get permission to use that again this year. We'll have a beer garden concert, food and merchandise vendors, and then we'll also have remote-controlled balloons, which is super fun. There are mini balloons that are controlled with fire, and if people get involved, they're loved, they love it. So we just felt that it was better financially, again, not moving tents, not moving the beer garden, not doing all that stuff, if we could just have it in one location. So City of Gearing is also very, still, still very supportive. And then the thing that kind of has taken off over the past few years is the Saturday event in Mitchell. After the balloons take off, they can go to downtown Mitchell and attend the craft fair. We have reindeer dog races, cornhole tournament. And they are professional cornhole players apparently that are attending it, so that's super fun. I didn't know that. So we're committed to marketing the event. We've set aside fifteen thousand dollars to promote Old West Balloon Fest. We were, we received a Nap Nebraska Tourism Grant. Rural Radio was always a good partner with us. We advertise in Inspire Magazine and Nebraska Life Magazine, Social Media Blast on Visit Nebraska. And then our social media, we have over thirteen thousand followers on our Facebook page. And then we started capturing email addresses as well, and so we have, I believe it's up to twelve hundred people now that get email updates from us. And then our website has been redesigned, so if you guys want to, it's a really pretty website. And of course, City of Scottsbluff is on, on the website, and they can click on your logo, and it takes you to the city's webpage, so. It takes a lot of us to put this on. So we've had the Village of Morrel, Terrytown, Gearing, and Scottsbluff, hopefully. We'll support the event with Kino funds. We're actually asking for community programming funds this year. Scottsbluff County is giving us money for the kids' camp. And then we have sponsors totaling over thirty-five thousand dollars. We are asking for twenty thousand from the community program funds for hotel rooms and to help defray the cost of special shapes. So when we bring in a special shape like this, they charge the event, they don't do it for free. So our budget, our hotel rooms, the pilots have already reserved the rooms at the Fairfield. Hotel rooms would cost around eleven thousand six hundred and ten dollars. And then so far, we've got nine thousand dollars for special shapes. So that's where your money's going to. And again, we do have other people sponsoring other things, like the discovery tent and some other things happening. So we really appreciate your help and support all these years. It just makes, makes, eh, put on a good event. My favorite crew person.
Where do your balloon crews come from?
So most of our pilots are coming from Colorado, New Mexico. We do have a few pilots from Wyoming. We have some pilots from Montana. So they come from everywhere, really. We've got, one of our pilots goes back and forth between South Carolina and Alaska, so we do have a lot of pilots that are coming from different places. And they typically bring their crews with them, but we also have volunteer crew from the area. But we do a volunteer barbecue this year. It will be at the Pioneer Baseball Field. So we'll have a volunteer sponsor softball playoff, so maybe you guys can get involved in that too.
Are a lot of these crews new, or are they returnees?
The, you mean the crews that are helping the pilots?
Yeah, the pilots, yeah. Are they returnees to the event?
They're returnees to the event, and then we also have a few new pilots this year. I'm trying to build it to fifty pilots. So if we, if we do build it to fifty pilots, our hotel bill is gonna look more like twenty thousand than eleven. So eleven thousand is for thirty. We've had a lot of pilots that are just finding out about the event. And we, the thing is, is that they pay their way to come here, so we treat them very, very well when they're here, pay for their hotel rooms, which is standard practice for balloon festivals. We try to give them a nice pilot gift, give them a couple of dinners, so that they wanna come back. And unfortunately, in our sport, the average age of a balloon pilot is sixty-five. So this ballooning camp kinda helps. I'm right there, I'm a year away. So, yeah, we, we're trying to encourage younger people to get involved in this sport, because a lot of people retiring.
All right, do you have any other questions?
No, thanks for everything that you do for the.
Oh, you're welcome. You're very welcome.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Call the roll please. Colwell?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Vidlock?
Yes.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I really appreciate the support.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Fourteen. Council reports, informational only. This item is intended for council members to update and inform other council members of meetings attended since the last city council meeting.
Didn't attend a meeting, but I did present to the students at Reconnect. We were asked, and I went and Rob Polk from the school board went. And we just spoke to the students about what do we do on the council and, you know, how they could participate in, you know, community things. So I had a little bit of feedback on a few things I can send you, so, but it was nice.
Cool.
Anyone else?
I had a couple of short ones. Humane Society, I was in contact with, and they just wanted to make a couple of points. They are open Saturdays and Sundays for adoptions. And so that's probably easier time for people to get in there and adopt. They have to be nineteen though to adopt, so I guess, you know, some high school kids have gone in, you have to have a parent with you. Financials look good. Their donations are up twenty-five percent. And actually, I was really impressed with the amount of donations they get. It's, it's pretty good. They are looking at adding a new room, like getting a coined room if you wanna get a new dog, similar to what they have for the cats, but that's a lot smaller. So they wanna maybe put one of those in for the dogs. And then for the zoo, just a couple items. So we had three clubs go to the zoo, I think a week ago. I was hoping for twenty kids to show up. We actually had thirty, so we had so many, I had to put some out on the floor. There they are. And I don't know how many hundreds of eggs we filled, but in an hour, it was hundreds and hundreds. The only thing that stopped us, we ran out of candy. If we had more candy, there was, I don't know, probably five hundred more eggs we could have filled.
Some kids gonna get some empty eggs?
No, no. Just the hard-boiled eggs. And they hit for the hunt. The bigger eggs have more candy in them, so there you go. But, yeah, they did a good job. It was National Honor Society Student Council and Spanish Club. So it was a good team effort.
Awesome.
And then the last one is, we got a bunch of footage from the zoo, and we gave it to the media department. And they, basically, they're doing editing practice. So we gave them a ton of footage, and then they're producing their own films, little short films. This is one of them. There's seven more, but they just came in today, so I couldn't bring those, but this is one that was made.
Hello, welcome to Riverside Discovery Center. I'm Desiree Dreniguson, the executive director. And we are going to take you on a tour of the zoo today. This is Kit the Marble Fox's exhibit, and we, previously, it was two separate exhibits. We took the centerpiece out and opened it up, so he's got a bigger area here. Oh, it's warmer, and the sun is shining. You can come out and play on the splash pad. We have the new pad, so little feet and big people speak don't burn on the concrete. It's also a lot softer. We have entered the zoo to the Discovery Center in the last year. You definitely need to come. We have redone the area. As you can see, it's painted much brighter. We raised the ceiling, it's painted white. It's not so dark and brown. We have crews, the Blue Wolf Cock. We have Emerald Tribos on the other side. I am standing in the future mountain lion exhibit area. We had to reconfigure some things. Brent has been working here as a welder since about the end of January. We had to open up the space. He installed the chutes. He put in two more gates, doors on the other side. The top half has been enclosed. In fact, Brent is getting ready to get up there and start welding now. Baby and Charlie, the spotted hyena behind me, are a brother-sister pair. They came to the zoo in August, September. Riverside Discovery Center has never had an hyena, so this is very exciting. They like to visit a lot, if you hear them. Some people question if it's the bear, but it is not. It's Baby and Charlie making noise. We have champs. Even Denver does not have champs. So come out and watch them. They can be very entertaining. Right behind me here. You see, she likes to come up to the window, and she will interact with you. We have five. So we have one male steward, and then we have four females. We have Granny, who's right here, and we have Krista and Becca and Joel. I hope you enjoyed your visit to the zoo today. Please come back and see us. Dino Day will be open, and the splash pad will be open, and hopefully we'll have some new animals to come and interact with. Dino Day will be open and the splash pad will be open and hopefully we'll have some new animals to come and interact with.
You're good, Joe? Yeah, that was good.
All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, call the roll, please.
McCarrigan?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Vidlac?